All right. Looks like we're unmuted. Can everyone hear us?
Yes.
All right. The time is now 7:02 PM and I will call this meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Rykel.
Here.
Pro Tem Henryhand.
Here.
Trustee Brentonall, trustee Claussen.
Here.
Trustee Flores, trustee Poston.
Here.
Trustee Seifert.
Here.
All right. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, did you have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, I have not heard from anyone today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I don't show any raised hands.
Okay. And we have nobody signed in with the chambers. We'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. It contains the minutes of the June 26th, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting. Anyone like to discuss any of those notes or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by trustee Claussen. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
None from here.
Yes, sir.
None from me. Does staff or the board have any agenda changes?
No, sir. Nope.
None here.
Nothing from here either. Okay. Moving right along, we will move on to the first reading of ordinance number three, series 2023, an ordinance of the town of Silt of Colorado enacting a new chapter 12.14 of the Silt Municipal Code to allow the town to regulate and review requests for closure of public right of way for construction work that requires any partial or complete closure of any public street, road, highway, alley, or sidewalk. And I will turn this over to Director Foner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came about as we have people cutting trees down or just doing general work in front of their house and they close streets off and they don't notify anybody. We've had an issue where the street was closed halfway down, so people were having to back out into an intersection to get turned around. And we didn't know and we were talking about, well, we need to have them let us know. And then we got to look and that we have no policy in place to kind of guide them for what the town would like to see, who they need to notify, and what kind of traffic plan is needed for certain projects. And if you read through this ordinance, there is, there's probably a little more in there than we need for the size of town we are right now. But this should allow, as the town grows, it will fit up to town like the size of Rykel when you get maybe a little bigger roads in town or things of that nature. So, and there is enough allowances in there that for the smaller projects, they don't need to go get a traffic control specialist and spend that money to get a engineered traffic plan as long as they can show the vital elements of it, if they need to close a road, where they're putting detour signs and things of that nature. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
What, when we closed during COVID, the street for a miners' claim, we just did through discussions, wasn't that we are following following any policies, we just decided as a board. How was that brought up?
That was, that was brought to the board because that was an extended closure. That was, what, six, eight, nine months?
Yeah.
Or something like this? No, that's not part of this policy. This policy is for construction. If you gotta take a tree down in your yard and it's gotta fall out into the road while you clean it up, this is not for an extended six, eight, one-year-long closure of a street. This is more for construction type. Because if we're gonna close the street like we did for miners' claim, it will come up in front of the board again if it's gonna be closed that long.
Okay. It's just good to make it very clear for the public as well why we are putting this policy in place.
Yeah, does, does the town have a road closure permit? Or is that, was that thought or discussed and just say, you know, conditions of the permit, you must abide by all of this?
We had nothing to deal with road closures.
No, I mean, does the town currently have a road closure permit?
No.
Okay. And I was just thinking, is that a, a way to, you know, to get a little bit of revenue for the town having a road closure permit and say, okay, if you get the permit, then you're going to abide by everything that you mentioned in this ordinance.
We will, we can like getting.
Are you gonna attach it on their other permit? So if they got a permit for like trees or sewer or water permit, or is this something you wanna attach onto that?
Yeah, the road closure program, yeah, for people taking down trees. Granted, they don't need a permit to take a tree down, but we could give it to like the tree services so they know we have a road closure thing. But yeah, for people coming in for excavation permits and things like that.
Sewer and that stuff, that'd be a good way to make sure it gets enforced because then it's, it's attached to that permit, so that's part of your permit. You abide by that. Don't abide by it, you get your permit or whatever. We don't give you the CO because, or whatever. It'd be a good, good way of enforcing it.
We can definitely make sure it's attached to permits like that, so they know.
Even if there's another fee on there, it doesn't matter, but I just, I think it'd be a good idea to be attached. That way you got some good leverage there.
And they're aware that they need to have that done.
Yeah, I think it's good just to make everyone aware. I don't know if I would support going to a point where there's a, a permit or a fee for a a road closure. I mean, 99% of things are already getting some sort of permit fee from, so.
Or permit, again, just to validate and make sure they're following policies, but don't attach a fee.
Yeah.
I, I'm aligned on the fee thing. I think there are enough fees in place for any scope of work, especially if it's an individual homeowner or something like that where it's not a commercial endeavor.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that was my thought, you know, and with the closures, there were no notifications. So somebody drops a tree in the street, are they still gonna notify the town? You know, yes. I mean, even if we have this in place, I mean, I just, or is that just because if we have this in place, if they get caught doing it, then you can say, hey, you guys need to do this?
Yeah. It's kind of that if, because that's what happened last time they were doing stuff and police fire, none of us knew. And the street was just closed. One of the, one of the crew members just happened to drive down the street and was like, why is this street closed?
Oh, okay.
So instead of a fee for compliance, there'd be a fine for non-compliance?
Yes.
Does that make more sense?
I think that's more of the way to go with it, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be my position as well. Do it the right way and it's free. Circumvent and somebody drives by and there's a tree in the street, then, then you're gonna have to pay that fine.
And we, we can get this out to the businesses, like the tree trimming services. We'll make sure to, because we have that list of contracted contractors licensed in town, we can get it out to them to let them know there's a policy in place they need to follow. And I will get with Nicole and the ladies in the building department that when excavation permits go out, we attach something to the back of it to let them know if they've gotta close the roads, this is what they need to do.
That's great.
Yeah, I would think it'd be a, at least at the minimum, an email to every contractor that's licensed of the town of Silt. It could be a tree guy, it could be a plumber, it could be an electrician. If we just blast the whole list with, with it, everybody that's technically licensed to work in the town of Silt would then know.
It can be attached when they renew.
I think attaching it to a hard copy when you get in.
When they renew their license too, they can attach it on when you renew their license every year. I mean, right there it is. Make sure they get it that way too.
Aware that it's out there.
Yeah, there's no excuse they didn't get it. You're renewing your license. Here's, when you get their license right there, it's, you know,
Yes, and the email.
New changes or whatever put on there that that's attention, some new stuff.
And I apologize if I missed this in the details in the packet. Where is the town gonna be publishing these closures?
I will, we can put them up on the website. I can put them out on the TextMyGov app.
I think that would be valuable for, for the citizens to know, hey, that road's gonna be closed. It's, it's important to keep the individuals doing it in line, but also to let people know and less chance of a problem. This makes all the sense to me.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? This is a public hearing, so the time is 7:13 PM and I'll open up the public hearing for the first reading of ordinance number three, series 2023. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, sir.
All right.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And we have nobody here in the chambers with us. So the time is 7:14 PM and I will close the public hearing and open it up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number three, series 2023 as presented.
Second. Motion by trustee Seifert to approve the first reading of ordinance number three, series 2023 as presented, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Henryhand. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving right along, administrator and staff reports. Administrator Lehman.
Just a couple of quick things I'd like to highlight for you. We had nearly 300 people show up for our first concert back on June 23rd, I think, the Oxymorons. And we had around 300 show up for the movie last Friday night, so we had quite a, quite a turnout for that. Who knew that animated films could be so popular? Farber's Market starts day after tomorrow in Veterans Park. We're gonna run from eight consecutive weeks through August 30th this year. We're not taking that week off like we did last year during the fair. And the second of three party, parties at the pavilion will be on Friday, this, this coming Friday. And the band is called Band of Brothers. Heyday coming up August 19th. And then I think they have their own website. If you wanna go, go online and see what they've got cook, cooking for that day. And then we have, oh, I wanted to point out to you that a late add to your packet was on your desk from the police department. A briefing from Chief Kite. And then last but not least, we still have, we've reopened our building inspector position. And we're gonna see, we're gonna try again to see if we can find somebody out there who might wanna take that job on. We still have one police officer position, I believe, open and are, we're hiring for utility billing clerk. And that's all I have.
I need to talk with you after this meeting about those, those positions that are being reopened.
Okay. You wanna inspect some buildings, do you?
Not the type of discussion I'm planning on having with you. Bad news, Jeff. Or good, depending on your perspective.
Anything you wanna share with us that we might?
Yeah, since you're kinda hinting at it.
We're the board, the body of the board.
I'm doing a contract with a recruiting agency and I'm learning about ATSs or applicant tracking systems.
Okay.
So how they work for employers as well as prospective employees. It's much more complicated than I thought in terms of getting the information out in a meaningful way to attract prospective employees.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm learning a lot about what companies are doing to position their jobs as well as what employees are doing to try and find and get through the numerous hurdles of getting a job.
So it is good news. It's enhanced ways of finding correct employees.
Jeff won't have to work with me, so there's that.
Oh, okay. I get it.
Any more than he already does.
Okay.
That's great.
I don't think we have anything else. Trey, you have any?
Um, I had my first meeting today on that tap grant I received for the bike ped bridge, that 904,000. It's kind of frustrating because I can't just pick up where we left off and continue because it's another pot of money. I have to go back out to an RFQ and get engineers again to respond to my RFQ and then pick one out of that and continue on.
RFQ?
Request for qualifications.
Thank you.
But if Roxol does submit an RFQ to me, if they have the best one, I can continue with Roxol, but I've gotta open it back up to everybody. And I can't just pick up where we left off and continue.
How do they verify that you're opening it back up?
I have to submit the RFQ to CDOT and those people to make sure I've got all the wording right and everything correct. And then I have to tell them where I post it and where it goes back out. And then they will also receive a copy of whoever sends in an RFQ for the project or a response.
And how long do those usually stay open for? Or how long did this one last time?
Last time, I think we stayed open for three or four months on it.
On that meeting, Trey, it said that the RFQ or RFP could not be advertised for more than three weeks.
Oh, okay, three weeks.
I don't know if you saw that.
That's where I was going with my question was can we reduce that timeframe?
No.
Sounds like they're doing it for us, though.
Yes, three weeks.
Three weeks is what they were saying. The advertising could be no more than three weeks.
I did not see that in all that information, but anyway.
So that may at least reduce the pain in terms of how long it lasts.
Yeah. But I can't go out until we get the IGA with CDOT and Federal Highway and all them signed on the actual grant. So, but that is moving forward.
So how much has CDOT already put into that project? Have we got anything from them?
Yes, the, the multi-modal option fund grant, which got us to 20% was basic, was a, not a 50/50, a little over, they, CDOT's portion was 260, right, Amy? 260,000?
Pretty close, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think ours was like 217 or something along those lines.
So with this one, it's actual federal money, so it's more federal highway that's funneled through CDOT. Will be 900,000 and the town's is 226,000 is our match for it.
And this is just to finish the engineering?
Engineering. This should take us to 100% design and engineering on a pedestrian, bike pedestrian bridge, and then we can go look for construction money.
If you don't have to start over, if you get to keep your 20%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this is, this is what's frustrating about government beyond town government is they've already spent $260,000 of CDOT money to tell you that it's not good enough. Do it again or find somebody else different to do it. So this is a clear example of why there's never any money for anything. When you pay for a project two, three, four times.
Bureaucracy has its downsides.
Stupid.
No, I, I agree.
What are the odds and the chances of getting it this time with all of your deadlines?
We already got it. I have the grant.
We have the grant.
So what is the holdup? I feel like some hesitancy from?
The whole, the holdup is I've already brought this project to 20% design. I've gotta put it back out to all engineering firms. And if for some reason somebody has a better package than who we're working with, they might look at it and say, we're not using any of their 20%. We're starting from ground zero and going again.
So you're now in between a firm that may just want to re?
I mean, in a perfect world, Roxol comes back with a bid that's 20% less than
Yeah.
everybody else, because they've already spent the money, they've already got the money and we continue on, but.
Yeah. So it's just jumping through the hoops of the federal money is what it comes down to. That we, Amy and I have to navigate.
He did make it clear we needed to compare apples to apples, so I don't know, I think that's how they get away with Roxol being 20% less because it's not gonna be a true apples-to-apples comparison.
So we just.
If that makes sense.
Yeah. It makes, well, it doesn't make any sense at all, but it's.
Well, no, I mean, but he made, he made that comment several times during this, this meet today that it has to be apples-to-apples comparison. So Roxol would have to bid for 100% of it, not 80% of it.
Right.
Yeah.
So in theory, you could possibly be starting over.
In theory, we could.
In reality, it probably isn't gonna happen.
I hope not, but I'm with Keith. No wonder nothing ever gets done.
Well, just keep pushing forward. I like that. Keep pushing forward.
At the end of the day, we're gonna have 100% design, hopefully.
Yes.
No matter what, but it's just.
The process.
And then after that, we don't have to start back at zero.
Yeah.
We just go for construction money and it's a whole different process.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Speaking of CDOT, weren't they gonna repave the overpasses here?
We were told August.
Oh, okay.
Is when it's supposed to happen.
You know, their budget starts July 1st, so.
Okay, gotcha.
So we, we knew it wasn't gonna happen before then.
And then the ramp work is next year, right?
The ramp work is 2026.
Oh, okay.
So it won't start until July of '25
Okay.
is when the 2026 budget kicks in.
So we still have a few more years of potholes.
Yes. Well. And slingshots. Hopefully they fix the potholes before then.
Potholes should be periodic. Every time one opens, they should fix it.
The potholes are periodic, but the repairs, not so much.
Question for Trey. That shelter that's on, that you're building on the park, right on the corner of 16th and Grand, what is that gonna be used for?
That is just a picnic shelter for shade.
I didn't know what it was. Just that what it is?
Yep.
Okay. Somebody asked me, I said, well, I don't know. It looked like a picnic. I thought that's what it was, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's all it is, just shade for people at the park.
It's just not quite finished yet. I think the.
We need to put the roof on yet.
You gonna put some picnic tables in there then, or?
Yeah, we'll bring a picnic table down to put underneath there, but we've got the tin on the roof to put on and then that should be complete.
Okay.
Yeah. Another question for Trey. Is that, is that what's staked at Veterans Park?
That is what's staked at Veterans Park to put another picnic shelter up in that corner.
Okay.
All right. Any administrator staff reports or updates before we move on to board comments?
That's it.
Okay.
Okay, as we are approaching budgeting season, I would like to invite the participation of the public to come in and voice their opinions and their, share your vision of what you'd like for us to see and focus on as we are making the plans for 2024. We always like to hear your feedback in what we decide here. We, we hope to be the best fit for what you envision the town of Silt to be. And not just now, but for future years to come. So come, join us for public meet, for our public meetings.
Trustee Claussen?
Um, I just had a question. Is Mike Kite still with us?
He should be.
Or, or anybody who can answer the question. So the OHVs, how exactly does that work? Just, you know, for the public at home, because yeah, I mean, in front of my house, I see people zipping up and down, you know, all, all day long and some of them, you know, look like they're 12 and, you know, some of them are probably doing well over the speed limit. So I just didn't know as kind of a reminder for the public, you know, what the rules are.
Get by a, get by a mic.
Microphone so he can hear you.
Yeah. You are a mic. You can't get behind a mic because you are a mic.
Redundant.
Trustee Claussen was talking about the rules for OHV use, just to kind of go over that. Our motorway public doesn't maybe understand who can operate an OHV and how they should be operating them.
OHVs have the same rules and regulations as a motor vehicle. You must have a valid driver's license. You have to have insurance on them. You have to have them registered. And with OHVs, it's the park's pass on the side. They have to follow the same guidelines, speed, stop signs, keep them on designated roads. There's really no difference between the OHVs and a regular vehicle.
Uh huh, okay. And then the, the town of Silt doesn't issue any sort of
No, we do not.
registration or anything like that?
We looked at that when we first brought this in and just kind of found it a little redundant because they have to have the, the park sticker anyway, which registers them with the state.
Uh huh, okay. And then I guess out of curiosity, have you guys had a lot of issues with, you know, people not obeying the rules other than?
We're starting to see a little bit more of it, so we're starting to crack down on it a lot more.
Uh huh.
But we do make quite a few contacts. And I don't know if it's lack of education or they're just using that as an excuse, like, I, well, I didn't know that. Well, I didn't know that. If you're caught driving like, for instance, an OHV without insurance, it carries the same penalty if you don't have insurance on a vehicle. We take your license, you've gotta get an SR22 for insurance from then on, whether you're a regular vehicle or not.
Oh, okay.
You have a court appearance. I mean, the list goes on. And we towed quite a few of them.
I think Claussen's issue that he's seeing, what I'm hearing, is that maybe younger folks driving them that may not be licensed. Did I hear that correctly?
It seems like it, but you know, it, it's hard to tell age.
Okay.
Yeah, we do. We get kids that are underage that shouldn't be driving them. We get people with suspended driver's licenses. People with revoked driver's licenses. And like I said, it carries the same penalties. It becomes a court date and it affects things on the back end also.
Yeah, and they're not supposed to be in Main Street or the overpass on I-70 because I see a ton of them going over that overpass and, you know.
And we've stopped quite a few of them coming back and forth over the overpass. And they're locals. They're not coming from Holiday Inn, they're not coming. But the majority, the majority not coming from KOA. Both Holiday Inn and KOA does a real, does a great job of educating people that you could have them here and here, but you're not allowed to go here, here, and here.
And Chief Kite, what's your policy for you and your team on warnings when it comes to HOAs and educating the public? Like, what's your overall?
It's a case-by-case basis.
I see.
Sometimes a warning is more than sufficient. Other times it's, you know, dealing with the individual and the circumstances at the time. It's an automatic citation.
And when we brought these on, didn't we find out we couldn't make them register it through the town? Wasn't that one of the things we found? So we can't, we have the stickers, they, we want them to come and get and we give them the. So we can't, we have the stickers, they, we want them to come and get and we give them the instructions, but by law, we can't make them register with the town.
Correct, yeah, we, well, you couldn't charge an additional fee.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
On top of it, yeah.
'Cause I knew you guys had the stickers, but I didn't know if, you know, you came and got the sticker, you guys would inspect the thing and make sure you have all the insurance and all that.
The, the stickers are, I guess, a, a way of saying, okay, you got the Cool Town sticker on there. That means you got a copy of the regulations at the time, but, so if you didn't know these regulations and the do's and don'ts, that's on you because you were given the, the information.
Got you, okay.
Awesome.
Thanks, thanks for the...
Nice seeing you, Chief Kite. Haven't seen you in chambers in a long time, so it's nice seeing you again.
Can I ask one last question or one follow-up?
No, no.
And this is an opinion question. Is it worth using TextMyGov or the sign to try and, let's call it, re-educate the public on these requirements? If you're an OHV driver, go here to ensure blah, 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 blah. I'm just trying to think out loud. It, it sounds like a lot of them are claiming ignorance, which is no excuse, don't get me wrong. But can we counter some of that by sending out messaging now that it's summer and more people are out and about on them?
And, to be honest with you, I don't know that much about TextMyGov. Um, sorry. Um, and I don't know if we can post messages out on that. I think Sheila and, uh, the girls up front would have a better idea if that could be posted out there. Um, and as much as I don't care for it myself, um, Facebook, it seems to be where everybody goes for their information. Um, good, bad, or ugly. Uh, it seems that, that's where everybody seems to go. And I think we could, you know, throw it out there on social media. We could put it out on our PD Facebook, the town Facebook. Um, even throw something up on the, on the sign.
That would be a good reminder.
You know, please refresh yourself.
Let's hit them wherever they are.
Regulations.
I couldn't agree more.
And yes, we can put it out on TextMyGov.
Yeah, okay.
Just, you know, OHVs, remember rules and regulation and direct them to the website. 'Cause I think it's all listed on the website, I believe.
Would that be Nicole, Sheila, who, who would handle that on the staff side?
I can do, on the website, Nicole, I can, Sheila and I send out the majority of the TextMyGov notifications.
Can we coordinate that? So we hit them everywhere once again, Facebook, text, sign, web, update the webpage, maybe your, your weekly memo or newsletter?
The board.
Like, yeah, just, just birdshot it and try and get as much coverage as we can.
Yep.
And a lot of my guys, they carry the rules and regulations with them, you know, to hand those out also. Just to kinda reinforce what they should be doing, what they shouldn't be doing.
Yeah, thanks, Chief Kite.
Thanks for the...
It's good seeing you, it'd be nice to see you more, you know, we have new tables, you know, I mean...
We have new furniture.
I'm, yeah. I'm sure Trey didn't like being over there all by his lonesome.
Yeah, exactly. Um, any other questions for me?
No, sir.
I don't have anything.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, I would like to make a quick comment to those who are listening and pass it on to those who may not be listening. Please lock your cars. Lock your vehicles and roll up your windows. Um, it's all over Facebook, it's over the social media. We've had a rash of... Sorry, we've had a rash of vehicle trespasses. And the scary part is, and it's no secret, they're bypassing valuables, wallets, cash, and they're strictly looking for guns and ammunition. We've lost multiple. It's ongoing investigation, so I'm not getting into exact numbers, but the numbers are kinda staggering for the amount of guns that have been taken from vehicles from Silt. So please, if your vehicle's not a vault, it's not a locker, if you're gonna leave it, take your valuables inside and lock them up. These are open vehicles that they're getting into. So we're asking the public to please start locking things up. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yes, thanks for that.
All right, anything else? Trustee Clausen?
No.
All right, trustee Seifert, you got it?
Um, just mentioned Farmer's Market starts this week. I think it's this week, isn't it?
Yep.
Yep. And just again to tell people to kind of slow down in the evenings, especially like on Sixteenth and Grand, there's a lot of kids. Some evenings, there's a lot, a lot of the afternoons, weekends, there's a lot of kids playing out there with the ball and stuff and just kinda slow down because people, the kids don't watch and they're just ball roll out, they're not paying attention, so... Especially coming down Sixteenth, uh, they kinda get going a little fast, so, um, and that's all I had.
All right, Mayor Protam?
See, you talked about not speeding, so I don't have to.
We're, we're like, one of us brings it up every time, so sooner or later, they'll get the message, I think.
I guess.
Trustee Britnall does as well, so he's not here tonight, so thanks for filling in. Um, just two things quickly, uh, this weekend, the Silt Historical Hubble is happening, that's another event, uh, Saturday morning, starts at eight AM. Um, so a local event if you're into running or walking or watching other people do it. Go over there and check it out and it's a fundraiser for them. Second, I wanted to say thanks to Trey. He did a great job at a presentation to DOLA last week to try and get us some funding. We had, what, seven minutes to talk?
Yeah.
And he talked for six and a half, so it went well.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
That's it. Um, for Trey, I've heard from a couple of people, there used to be a barbecue pit at Flying Eagle that is no longer there after the upgrades? Like a...
Flying Eagle?
At the park?
Eagles View.
Eagles View, yeah.
Yes.
Are we putting one back in or is it gone? Was it a hassle?
There, there's still one there, it's just up on top by that other picnic bench.
Okay.
The one that was down by the park, we took out because, one, we've taken them out every place because red flag warnings and fire danger, they're just open grills like you see at, um, different parks.
Yeah.
And also, we didn't want anybody to throw some out on our new fall protection and melt through it.
Okay. Both very good reasons not to have one there. Um, and then are we having the guys come spray for mosquitoes before we do our concerts in the movie in the park?
Yes, we are spraying for mosquitoes before concerts, movie in the park and we, Farmer's Market.
Farmer's Market.
We will.
Nice. Okay, and then this one would be probably for Jeff. How, how much work are they allowed to do right now at the Autumn Ridge property?
They, they have their permits to put the entryway in off of Highway six. And then the other permits that they have, they are moving that water service to the house that they subdivided off from the line that comes down Cactus to the line that's out on six and twenty-four. And they have the permit to stub out of that manhole right there and just shoot the sewer onto their property for whatever they're gonna develop. And that's, that's the extent of what they have any permits for.
Okay.
Thank you, Trey, I would've gotten there.
You would've gotten there, appreciate it.
Oh.
I was thinking.
Sorry.
No, hey, let's use everybody's time wisely, it's okay.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess my follow-up question to that would be, without a, any sort of subdivision plat or anything, how can they go ahead and put an entrance in if that's not what may be approved? All right, if this board comes back and tells, they have to connect to Cactus Drive Water, if it is north of there, instead of going on to Highway six, seems like they've got the cart before the horse if someone gave them permission to build a, an entryway.
I thought that was already approved 'cause they had the CDOT permit and everything. I thought it...
All we approved was the rezoning of the property.
That I couldn't tell you where that went through.
We'll ask some questions and get back to you on that.
Okay. Uh, then last one, is anything going on with the Frontage Road property in front of the Holiday Inn that we sold?
Yeah, they asked for a two- or three-week, uh, extension on... I miss having our Realtor here on the board, he could tell me what this was for uh, subsurface, uh, concerns or surveys or something, so...
Yes.
They, they have some, they're still, they're still in their due diligence process.
Process?
Uh, we're still adhering by the calendar that, that had been put forth uh, until last week when they asked for a, for a, an extra three weeks, or I think it was, it was either two or three weeks to, uh, extend to, uh, uh, finish their due diligence on, on subsurface conditions.
Okay. That's all I've got. Anything else? Looks good, all right. Next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Uh, motion by trustee Seifert to adjourn the meeting, seconded by trustee Clausen, all is in favor?
All right.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.